Minutes from the last meeting. February second. There was a couple of us not here.
That we approved the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those who are here, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. All right, the first thing that we have on the agenda tonight is a conditional use permit, a public hearing for five hundred South Verizon, twenty twenty-two cell tower modification.
That was a mouthful, thank you. Pretty straightforward, if we can just do the awesome thing. The applicant is looking to, it's an existing tower and they're looking to swap out some improvements, or some equipment, excuse me, and add some additional improvements. All of it's going to be within the existing compound, or on the existing tower. And so when we give you a second to see the picture, it's on five hundred south to the north of the storage unit. So further north of this site is the ball field of the city park. Now, the DRC did review this prior to it coming before you tonight, and they did provide the recommendation that you have in the staff report, which was to recommend, excuse me, theirs was a recommendation, but yours would be an actual decision. Theirs was recommend approval finding that the proposed modifications and expansion do not have an adverse impact on the adjacent properties.
And the recommending approval?
Yes, sorry. I just feel alone up here without the PowerPoint.
Song and dancer next.
If you'd like, we could go into a public hearing and then we can show the picture of it afterwards.
Sounds good. Is there anything different with this one than any of the other ones that have come at the end of last year?
No, we had them on a unique basis, one by one individual basis. This one is just increasing the number of antennas that you'd see on the top of the tower, but it's not technically co-location as a second array. So it's just a single attached array, but just additional antennas. And then they usually do some additional equipment on the ground level, additional wiring, things of that nature.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandon? All right, seeing none, we'll move into a public hearing. With our public hearings, there's a few of them tonight. We give everyone three minutes, and then if there's some things that come up there, we'll take all of your questions or concerns, and then answer them at the end. So with that, is there anyone here for this public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission approves the cell tower with staff's conditions and findings.
Have we got a motion?
Second.
A second. Any comments or concerns about the motion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to zone change. This again is a public hearing for Expressway Plaza.
Can you pull it up in your purse and share it? Give your Gmail open. Go to the planning commission one, and then hit open. And then, share. Kim, I could, you want it shared too? I'd like to say it was technical difficulties, but I think it's my fault that Mike doesn't have access to it. I sent it to his home email instead of his work email.
Okay, we're good.
Let's jump to the presentation, if that's all right?
Yep.
All right, so this is the first of two zone change requests that we'll have before you tonight. This first one is Expressway Plaza, it's there at the intersection of Expressway and SR fifty-one. Just to the west is the Anila Townhomes that came before you last year that are under construction. And then to the north, that was part of, that was, that area was part of the recent rezone that was looked at when we looked kind of holistically at the Canyon Creek, Spanish Fork Parkway area. This one is associated with a site plan that went before the DRC, who gave it conditional approval. One of those conditions was that the site's zoning be changed. So it's here before you tonight for recommendation to the city council, who would ultimately take action on it. If we jump to the next slide. So on the left, you see their proposed site plan. At the corner, you'd have a dental office and an orthodontist office, and then you've got a smaller building to the south that has three retail tenant spaces. It would do a lot to improve the intersection and the look of the area. So when it was looked at, the staff on the DRC recommended approval. It's consistent with the city's general plan, but the general plan for this corner is commercial, and so it's in line with that. There were just a few talking points that they spoke to that relate more to the site plan, but just wanted to give the planning commission a heads up concerning those key issues that are listed in the staff report. Number one, we've already addressed, the site plan was conditionally approved, contingent upon approval of the zone change. Number two is, this area in the past has had some history sort of associated, excuse me, with construction debris and other landfill activities in the past. And so, the applicant's been advised that if they uncover or come across any debris, it does need to be removed from the site, and there's a few other things that would need to take place associated with that. They have done some geotech reports that found a little bit, and some previous utility work by the city in the area has caused some concern, so that is, is on the city's radar.
Are you confident our inspectors would catch something like that if they didn't report it?
We would hope that they would coordinate with the city, and if the inspectors didn't catch it, that they would self-report it to us. It'd be in everybody's interest.
Yes, though, I mean, I'd add to that, yes.
You're confident?
Yeah.
You don't need it to be a condition? That they have a special inspection during excavation?
We're, we're likely progressing in that direction, that there may be some additional oversight. We have inspectors on staff, and in addition to that, particularly because all of a sudden, we're reviewing a number of different projects that are cited on properties that have some previous use. And sometimes those uses, we think, might have created some type of, potentially contamination on the site, or that type of a thing, where we might need some more expertise in terms of making sure that sites are handled the right way. Maybe when something's discovered on a property, or that type of a thing. So we retain a consultant to help us with both reviewing, for example, like a phase one or phase two, before a project gets approved, but then also in the field to make sure that we are keeping tabs on things the right way, so that maybe things that, our building inspectors, who aren't necessarily trained to identify, whether it be contamination, or just things that, that need to be taken care of from an environmental perspective when a site's being developed. We would rely on, on that party to help us make sure that everything's being handled the right way. And we're probably going to change our procedures on developments like this, where there's a high likelihood that there are things that need to be dealt with, to where there is some of that oversight on some type of regular basis during the life of the construction of a project.
So with that being a process that we're going to look to in the future, would it be, it'd probably be something that we should make a conditional, a condition of this approval or recommendation, just to, you know, set that tone?
Or do you already feel like the city has the teeth it needs to have that oversight if needed?
We have a condition of approval on the site plan that is something that I would say is kind of to that effect.
So I think we've covered it in that regard.
Yeah. I was kind of alluding to that.
This is a zone change, too.
Right.
But I want to feel comfortable, I want to know that the city feels comfortable applying conditions of if you guys feel like during the site plan approval, you need to apply that condition that you.
That, that will be appropriate in the future. The procedural changes, changes, excuse me, that Director Anderson referred to just barely, those are being drafted as we speak. Public Works is taking the lead on that, and so we will have something before you soon. Might be changes to the construction standards, might also include changes to the city code as well. I think that's about it. Any questions for staff? Otherwise, we'll turn it back over to you to.
Perfect. A public hearing. All right.
Thank you.
We'll move into public hearing for this one, if there's anyone here to talk about the Expressway Plaza. Seeing none, we'll move out of.
It's the applicant here.
Oh, it's the applicant here. All right, does the applicant want to speak to anything?
Well, I'm an architect.
Architects? Do you guys have anything to add to what's been said?
A little report.
We are aware that we're going to excavate and check the.
Do you guys want to come up to the microphone here?
Your comments are good, we shall make sure they're on the record.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Theron Smith, the orthodontist in the project. Yeah, so we're aware that we got to check the previous use, the soil conditions and stuff, that's high on our radar, so.
I'll ask the applicants, on the other three, or on the site here with these other three units, do you know what is going in there yet, or is it something that will be decided as you go along? Do you have plans for those three units?
So, so far in the project, we have one letter of intent. Am I allowed to say who?
Or maybe just the nature of the business, without naming?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to describe the nature of the business.
That's what I, that's what I noticed here, is that you have the drive-through here for the potential for one of these businesses to have something like that, and it looks like you've discussed the parking and stuff that would have to accommodate those businesses.
Yeah, so the letter of intent is for the drive-through space, that kind of a, some cookie type of establishment with the drive-through desire.
Very good.
Perfect, thank you.
Very appropriate with the dental offices.
Get the cookies and then go see the orthodontist, right? Any other questions or comments, discussions? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion. Oh, we did the public hearing, yeah. We could close it too, yeah?
Yeah.
For the applicant. Okay. I think so. Okay, we're good.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Expressway Plaza's zone change, I recommend it for approval based on the findings in the staff report.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any? Okay, moving on, that passes. And goes to city council. Next one, zone change for three hundred north duplex addition.
Let's go ahead and advance this slide, please. I'm not sure if we have the applicant here on this one tonight, but we can go ahead and move forward. This was originally intended to come before you previously, and then at the applicant's request, it was held off. We did renotice this for this meeting tonight, as well as the upcoming city council meeting. So just to briefly give you a little bit of information. The applicant's looking to utilize the infill overlay zone, this is the John Smiley project. He's come before you on a couple of other infill projects before, and so we kind of have a feeling that he's got a good grasp on the expectations of the city when it comes to utilizing the infill.
How's the city's experience been with it?
I would say pretty good. I can give you a list of the projects he's done, and you can drag by them.
I know of a few, and they look great.
Yeah. So the, the property has two existing duplexes, one here and one here, as you enter into the property. So if we jump to the next slide, what he's looking to do is add the duplex here on the back. And I believe last October, we had the applicant come before you, kind of in a conceptual review, and you gave him some pretty good feedback and direction as far as materials and some treatment that he could do to the existing duplexes to kind of meet the intent of the infill and kind of raise the quality of, of the neighborhood and the homes in the neighborhood, rather than be a detraction. The DRC did look at it, did give a positive recommendation to apply the infill overlay zone with a zone change to the R three. And all that would allow is the additional duplex to be built in the back. And so what you see here kind of meets some of the items that the DRC's requested, as well as some of the direction that the planning commission gave last October. For instance, if we jump to the next slide, this is an image of the existing duplexes here. You can see he's added the gables that were discussed. The materials, he's going to match brick with brick, and then the ends where he's adding garages on to the existing duplexes will be hardy board, which will match the hardy board on the rear duplex.
I didn't see a height on the elevation. Do you know the height of the, of the entire structure versus the height of the townhomes that are just next to it to the west?
I don't. I know in reviewing it that it falls under the maximum height, which is thirty-five feet, which we allow. The townhomes to the west are two stories, so it would probably be similar.
That's what I'm after.
Yeah.
But the existing ones are a single story?
Single story, yep. And so if we jump backwards a slide, please, Mike. If you look at the conditions, one of the things that was requested by the DRC, which the applicant will need to update as he moves forward with the plans, is adding some landscaping and street trees to the frontage. So currently, if you go by the park strips are concrete. Condition number three is that concrete would be removed, replaced with some landscaping. And then the trees, a few more would be added, so that you'd have a uniform spacing of every thirty feet. May not, may not result in too many more additional trees, but it would be a nice touch.
Brandon, will this, this masonry wall, is it going to extend, because he owns both these properties, right? Is it going to extend to separate, or is he planning on having this be a communal area?
It would be separated. We appreciate the applicant as far as making the changes, and we anticipate seeing the changes necessary if there's conditions that are applied tonight. Does the planning commission have any questions for staff on this project or the staff report?
I have one comment, and that is, is that I appreciate the applicant taking to heart the things that we discussed with him, and it appears to me like he's got everything that we asked him to do in, in a, in a good manner. And additional two units are going to be interesting. It seems like he brings some, some kind of a twist to a lot of the projects that he brings to us. This is one of them. I know that the current duplexes, this now has a covered parking. Is that going to just be open now, and the, because this is a garage, these are garages now? So this will not be?
Yeah, it'll be removed.
Oh, he's, he's not turning the covered part into garages?
So there's a detached structure here that would be removed, and then each of the duplex units would have a single car garage added. And then this would be additional parking to meet our infill parking requirements as far as residents and guests.
That's it, so I, I've driven in there several times, and, and it's a tight, it's a tight little squeeze in between those two buildings, and so they're gonna, oh, but they're adding, he's adding trees and bushes in a place that's already there for trees and bushes to be, not making it skinnier. Adding that extra parking and a turnaround there is going to be awesome.
This is, this is the same width, right, from here to here? That's the existing width, it's already there.
Plus, it appears that there, there's still a little additional area here, and I believe that exists, doesn't it? Isn't that what I called now?
Jump to the street view, he does have, I believe, a carport on one of the duplexes with a pad to the side, and then the other duplex.
Yeah, I think that's.
I believe it's just a single pad. We're at four fifty-five east, three hundred. Right there. Oh, too close.
Yeah, that would happen.
The unit on the west is the carport.
It's showing the asphalt, the black, blackout on the sideline. So it looks like the landscaping's going right on.
Yeah, there'll be a parking space added there.
Yeah, that'll bring it closer to the street right here.
I do have one question, stay with that view right there, this is the concrete that's going to be removed and replaced with a park strip. It will have grass and trees. I have been hearing about, and this is for the general staff, been hearing about a water conservation bill that is going through the state legislature now, that deals with a lot of water issues, and one of them has to do with building standards and the possibility of doing away with park strips and making them impervious and not having a space here to water. Has the city been involved or asked about their, their, you know, about our, you know, feelings about those things?
Can you just clarify one thing before Dave jumps into answers? So the condition that you see is just requiring landscaping, so it's not necessarily that we're asking for grass in the park strips in this case. There's other ground cover, shrubs, or things that could be done.
Okay, there could be zero scape in Jersey.
The idea is to flip your strip or some of those programs. The idea is to go away from just straight turf grass and having something with more native plants, low watering, more you can maybe drip or do like a low spray versus having just grass. So I think it's shifting the paradigm away from, I only do grass and park strips, to there are other things you do that's more water friendly, you don't have the overspray onto the streets, and that's something that's being pushed.
I'm glad to hear that the city's been proactive in that bill and, you know, participating in it, because it would change some of the things we've talked about recently.
I don't feel like we've been participating, though, to be honest. I think we're just waiting to hear what the legislature says we can and can't do. And you might remember some of the things that we've had to each of the last several years to amend our ordinances at the conclusion of the legislative session, to make sure our laws are consistent with the state code. That's how I look at this, we're just waiting to hear. Unfortunately, we're about across the finish line in the session, so we'll know what to plan for, but this might be one of the areas where we have to make some changes to our standards.
But I do think that Mike hits the nail on the head, that there's more than one way to attack that issue if it is something that is required of the city, so.
Do we know what the applicant might be planning in that strip?
Uh, not at this moment.
But that's something that staff would be happy to follow through with as far as prior to issuing a building permit. We'd expect that any conditions that are applied be met. He's, as I kind of was referencing with Commissioner Ernst a second ago, we do have a couple of other sites that he's done through the city, and staff does walk through prior to occupancy, and we count shrubs, we look at trees, we make sure borders are in, and things of that nature, and he's, he's done a good job.
Do we check that masonry walls are actually masonry walls?
That is one that we actually have a bond on to be replaced.
But it still hasn't been replaced?
Not yet, no, it's still the rhino rock.
And the clock is ticking.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, we'll move into public hearing for this, the three hundred north duplex addition. Anyone here to speak on this? Come on up.
Should go back to the previous slide. So I'm the. Where the trailers are, that's my property.
Go ahead and state your name for Jackson. State your name for Jackson.
So, that's my property. Do you see where there's dual lines?
Here's a pen for you.
Here you go. So.
Wow, I gave him one that doesn't work.
I got another one.
Mine.
So, you see how there's two lines right here? There's a property dispute, and John has verbally told me that this that comes over is mine. But I'm not seeing it on any documents that's been given so far.
But, explain that again.
So.
The line is there now?
How John talked to me when he bought this, I, I know John. I went out to Wyoming and remodeled his house for him, I'm an electrical contractor, a general contractor. And I went out and I did that for him. And he knew that I was interested in rentals and doing things like that. And so when he bought that, and I got the letter in the mail, I was a little bit upset with him, because he knew what I wanted to do. But without that being, he, he said, well, there's a two-foot dispute right here, and that's when the butlers contacted him. Somehow, I, I can't remember the exact wording of everything, and he said they contacted him to find out about that two-foot dispute. And he said, well, that's okay, I'll just give it over to him. So that needs documented, that I get two feet of that, I wish that he was here. So we need that. Another thing, there's easement that goes out through here for these butlers, before this was purchased by Smiley. The, I could use this, there's a fence right there, he cannot access any of that from here, currently, right now. It's a permanent fence, there's no gates.
There's nothing.
The only way he can get to it is through my property. Now, that's fine, I mean, he's got wood stacked up over here and stuff like that, that's fine. But I was allowed to use it in the meantime. So if this changes, and it needs to be written, what's going to happen with this pole? What's going to happen with the lines that come across here? This pole feeds a pole over here, and feeds power here, and here. What's going to happen with that stuff? And then further, if he's opening this up, there can only be one access, because the agreement was, I could use this, as you see the trailers existing, I could use this from when the butlers had it. But now this has taken effect, we can no longer use that. So this wall, masonry wall everywhere, needs to put in place before construction begins, because I don't want to be paying the upkeep through my stuff or heavy equipment, multiple situations like that.
So are you concerned that the construction equipment would come down your driveway on that west side and come down into here?
Down the easement that's already in place.
Rather than in the driveway that's between?
He's got access through here. If he says, well, I don't have enough access to build this, how's it going to get a fire truck back there? Let me ask you another question. If you approve this, we'll approve this, where I can put a duplex back there. I've got more land right here than he does.
That's up to you to apply for overlay.
Sure, but we were told in the beginning, no, we couldn't, because the fire truck couldn't come back and make a turn to go out. But on his proposal, I don't see a turn. And they can back out mine just as easy as they can back out his.
We'll have staff speak to that at the end here. We'll have staff speak to the, to the questions at the end. the questions at the end, to kind of answer some of those concerns.
But, yeah, and, and when, when we say, yeah, they'll, they'll clean it up and, and stuff like that, and that's great that you used his name originally to begin this, but it makes no difference who's building it. It makes no difference what he's done. For example, behind our existing house that we're living at now, there's a big project that's been going on for three years. I've asked the city multiple times to comment. They need to take care of the digging, they need to take care of the blowing dirt, they need to take care of stuff. I'm in construction, I know what construction is. And not once have they held the contractor accountable. They, they're building houses without roadway being finished. Us as residents are paying the price. So it needs to be put in the paperwork before it's approved. These are the expectations that need to be followed. So, that's what I'd like to see. I'm, I'm not saying, don't build it. All I'm saying, we need to make some adjustments to take care of the residents around it.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing and, I don't know, who wants to answer some questions?
Did you take one? I've got some notes. All right, I'll let you keep the first one, Adam.
Um, it's silly. Great questions, great issues to discuss. Some of them I think we can help with and, and need to for sure. Some of them I don't think we, we maybe can do a whole lot with. Um, it's not uncommon at all for there to be property line disputes in the originally plotted parts of the community. If we go back to the just regular aerial image, you can see, as Mistress Davis pointed out, things like this gap here, or what at least appears to be a gap relative to how the dimensions of this lot were entered in from a deed by somebody that works with the county and how that did or didn't match, uh, how the descriptions of other deeds were entered in for surrounding properties. Um, does that make sense just from what you can see here? The, the number of situations that aren't like this, where it appears clearly that, uh, the lines from this parcel match the lines for that parcel where they share a boundary perfectly.
How are those resolved?
Uh, privately. So that is a civil matter that property owners, um, have to deal with. Um, occasionally, ultimately, they get litigated. Um, certainly if there is a clear, uh, reason for us maybe to withhold a building permit or something like that, we would absolutely, well.
Bond, am I getting? I mean, if, if they cross the boundary line or something like that.
Yeah.
But the city wouldn't have an opinion on the property lines, you know, dispute or overlap with the gap or whatever. That's a private issue.
Is it?
We wouldn't wanna make something blatantly get worse or anything like that.
Is it safe to say that if we approve, uh, or recommend approval of a zone change contingent upon compliance with the site plan that we see, it's then on the applicant to produce that site plan, and if there's issues that the applicant has that makes it, makes them unable to produce what they've shown us, well, then they're back to the drawing board. That's not, that's what you're getting at. It's a private issue.
Exactly, yeah. And it is the responsibility of the applicant to be able to execute on what was approved.
There you go.
And if, for example, um, it were to become evident that maybe they have less property than what was included in the site plan originally, potentially that would mean they have to go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
And come back through the process again. Uh, does that make sense?
Uh, I understand, but I'm, I'm a general contractor, I'm an electrical contractor. I understand how construction works. But let's talk about power poles. Let's talk about the power lines.
There's no change proposed to the power pole. It would have to be protected and the clearances would have to be there.
Okay, so what you're saying is he's now done this project over here to the west, and no change was done to this main pole, you know, where the main pole is?
Yeah, currently services.
Right there, okay, there's the main pole right there. No change was done around here 'cause he was over here, this where his power is, you can see it right there with the centralizer and transformer on here, right there. But now this is the power pole. There's a power pole here, feeds over here, feeds over here. This feeds communications. I doubt why, something needs to be done at that point.
I don't think that, I mean, just speaking from the, maybe similar situations where issues like this have come up, or we've discussed it with our power department, in asmuch as that pole is not on the site and they can tap into power otherwise without, um, impacting that pole or any other lines that go to or from it, um, we wouldn't have any reason to require them to do anything with this development here.
Okay, so if the power pole's not on his side, okay, that, that's the statement. The power pole isn't on his property, right? So I can go ahead and say, beyond that is my property.
James, James, that according to law. And he's not a surveyor either.
Well, I've had a survey.
I'm not comfortable saying this, that from this image, if this is the property line or even if it's within a foot or two of how the property line seems to line up with what's on the ground, then, you know, clearly that's not. Now, I'm happy to talk from another perspective as well, which is that, um, our power department would review any proposals that did impact an existing power pole, an existing power lines and, and that type of a thing. And there's nothing necessarily to say that automatically just because a pole is on a property that lines need to be relocated or the pole needs to be modified or anything to that effect. Oftentimes, it's the case because oftentimes when we start to get towards the interior of blocks, there are power lines that go over where people wanna put a structure, like what we're talking about here. So that's not uncommon at all, that poles have to be relocated and that type of a thing. But I think what Brandon says, this syncs up perfectly with what I remember of the conversations that we've had.
And our utilities department would look at that and then ultimately make that, that decision, right?
Yeah, they're on the review chain.
Yeah.
That's one of the things they look for.
I'm just trying to be proactive at this because down that line, when he sets that stone, that concrete fence in place, he's gonna have to lift it up, right, and set it in place. And if it's a six-foot fence, you're gonna have to go twelve foot higher, right? And the boom's even gonna be higher than that. And if you have power lines running down that line, you have to run home.
Right, that's something the applicant's gonna have to face and figure out how to make that happen without disrupting power to other people. One other question that was talked about was fire truck access.
And the easement.
And the easement, yeah.
And the easement, yeah. How does the easement work?
Private, right? Once again, we don't really have much to, to comment on that way. I, I can say that the plan does involve the applicant constructing a masonry wall there. And certainly just from what we would see as we look at ownership records, at least at that, it doesn't appear as though the owner of this property has any right to cross any neighboring property.
It doesn't show easements.
Um, it doesn't show easements, that's right. But, um, certainly the intent is that access to any surrounding properties becomes completely precluded when the permanent wall's constructed. Exactly when that happens in, uh, or during construction, they would have to place the wall before they get very far at least on constructing this home. Um, so we wouldn't necessarily withhold the building permit for them to start construction on the duplex there before the wall's installed, except that we've had some experiences otherwise with this applicant, comfortable saying, so maybe in this case we might. But it would happen very clearly.
Well, well, but previously, in, sorry, didn't you say that the wall is not up here?
Oh, it's, sorry.
I thought it's the wrong material.
So, this is not the stand, this is not the spec that wall.
Okay. So is the stone wall the same that's along here?
No, no, that's not the, concrete or cementing wall. It won't be rhino rock.
It's the backside wall. I mean, you've got, you're gonna build these places. You're gonna have a lot of construction workers coming through here. I've got a lot of equipment. I've got a lot of stuff here. I feel that it should be the city's responsibility to say, okay, we're gonna go ahead and approve this, but we need this and your access is here. And that's what I want. I wanna protect my interests.
I appreciate you clarifying that. I think that is exactly how we understand it. Do you see it any different than you, Brandon? Yeah. And, you know, relative to just, uh, the likelihood that we would ever put a fire truck on a lane like this, I've never seen that happen. I don't think our guys, uh, ever planned to approach an event like that. They would typically stage things out here, which is partly why we require to have, sorry, we require projects to have a fire hydrant within a certain proximity of every, of every home in a development. The hydrants will be in the public right of way out here, um, with the idea that that's where guys would tap in and they'd approach something, um, on the interior of the block that way with just a line versus ever taking a, a fire truck down a lane like that. Other properties are situated a little bit differently. Mr. Davis might be super happy to talk anytime about some of the challenges that, that we've observed when other people have talked to us in the past about trying to, to build something more back here. It's, it, it's a different situation just given the width of that lane and some things like that, but.
But take that car that's up there by the twenty point four. You see that white car? You see his entryway there? Yeah, go right, right there. That's a car, that's a trailer. That trailer, that's a, I mean, sure, he'll take it out a little bit through the summer, but it's there all the time.
Yeah, clearly, yeah.
He's blocking a fire lane. So the minimum's twenty feet width, and that's kinda different, right? This one's thirteen-ish, if you remember.
I, I'm not building back there. I'm not building back there.
Yeah, right, I go on one and not the other. And the one's twenty feet, the other's thirteen. The fire code's twenty feet.
Sure.
And a hundred and fifty feet of depth, which is about, is a bit regular.
So three sixty-one north, that's my son's property. So if I go back, it's my grandmother right now, my son's buying a car. If I go to build a house there, him and I are doing something totally different than what this is showing. I'm, I'm not worried about that.
Gotcha.
But I want somebody to stand up and say, you know what, he's, he's a good guy, he knows what he's talking about. Yeah, we can push this through the pain, but, you know, he did for, you know, for John.
Well, um, I'll speak for Brandon for just a moment. We have quite a bit of experience with John doing projects like this. Um, and by and large, John's been a guy that we can rely on and do what he says. Occasionally, it takes a couple of bites of the apple to get there. Um, and beyond that, I'd say he, uh, particularly, I think, as of late, Brandon, I think the project study that, that turned out to be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
I, I don't, I can say, I have no problem with a good little man. But I want, we, we can't have what's going on over by seven sixty-four, eleven hundred east in that budget behind me when multiple times you have returned my phone call to the damage that's being done to our houses over there and stuff, right? We can't have, we still can't use our backyard. It's been three years, and that's not right. It's a citizen of sight.
I think those are discussions, right, that are done, you know, best in person or, you know, offline. But for here, talking about this, this parcel, like, we've heard the questions, and I, I think we answered the ones that you've asked, right?
Will there be amendment that that concrete wall is up?
We'll go with the ci, what the city's standards are unless someone makes a motion otherwise, and we'll talk about that here in a second.
Prior to occupancy, you go out and verify that all the improvements and all requirements of the site plan are in place.
Perfect. Thank you, Brandon. Commissioners, do we have any questions or discussions? Oh, we'll go out of public hearing. Thank you. Okay.
I have another question. One is the, if, if there's a prolonged construction period, i- is there anything in the code that says once you have something approved, there's a certain amount of time until you need to be finished with your, with your project timeline for completion?
Um, it's not very effective. If you have an inspection, a building inspection once a year, your building permit, I was saying it was once a year, he says a hundred and eighty days. I trust him. So every six months, if somebody schedules an inspection, even then have to pass it, um, their building permit can remain valid for a really, really long period of time. That hasn't been an issue for us so much in recent years. During the recession, we had a number of different, uh, situations where projects just drag on and created significant problems for neighbors, but, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so.
So it can drag on for a long time.
It can drag on for a long time, and so there's not anything that says you need to be finished. Completion needs to be done by this time, otherwise there'll be fees or impact fees, whatever, for the name.
We don't have a good way to compel people to do things. Um, we're most effective when somebody wants something from us and we can withhold it. That's really how it works. So in that case, there's not a lot we can do.
Other questions, comments? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion.
I guess I have one more concern. And I don't know if this is the, if this is the place of the, of the planning commission, but I can understand, remind me your name again, I'm sorry.
Colby.
Say that again?
Colby Bates.
So, Mr. Colby Bates?
Davis.
Davis, Mr. Davis. I can see how that would be a concern, that you wouldn't want construction, you wouldn't want construction vehicles, equipment coming up on your access and crossover into, on his property and crossover onto his. And I'm just wondering, is there, I'm just wondering, like, is it something that you just do, like neighbor to neighbor and say, please don't bring your stuff on my property? I, I mean, how does that, how does that work?
It's a private, so Colby's private, he's private.
Right.
And if the neighbor doesn't have a right to own his property, then it would be trespassing.
And there's not a easement on, there's not a?
Well, if there is, that means they have the right to go on the property.
Right.
So, so it's private property, interrupt any time.
To me, that seems like the two-parties need to get together, maybe hire legal representation to review the language of the easement. Um, and we can encourage that the construction traffic not utilize it, but I don't know that we have the ability to place any conditions upon, upon that.
Yeah, I think that's a private property issue, an easement, just like the boundary line we talked about earlier. If there is an easement, then whatever the scope of that easement allows is what that, the beneficiary of that easement will be able to do. But again, that's not something for the city to get in the middle of or tell them they can or can't do that. If the property owner has the right to do it, then he does, but, um, that's, that's my opinion. It's a private property issue.
It's up to Mr. Davis and Mr. Smiley to work it out.
Have this between them. But otherwise, absent an easement, obviously, like Commissioner Ernest said, there's no, no right for somebody to go on someone else's private property.
Yeah, it's trespassing.
And I, I understand about the civil. All I'm asking you is, because you guys can say, hey, we want you to use hardened board on the back of this unit, and he needs to comply with that. All I'm asking for, put in there, we would like this stone wall up, this masonry wall, this concrete wall, uh, fired to construction. It's a contingency table, a permit. You guys can do that.
But is it proper? I don't think it is proper. I don't think that this body or the city council has the right or the position to go into somewhere and, and mandate what, what process you will follow in the development of any property. Property right here of, uh, that's on the west, it had a lot more impact on your property than this one.
I didn't know that at the time.
Well, regardless, there it is. And this is a lot smaller area. The only access to it is either through your property or through these two units now.
Through this.
Even if that wall goes away, the only way that anybody can access it is through those two places, right? And so for, if you've been in construction and you've done a lot of this site work, it's someh, it's sometimes really difficult to put that fence in until you're just about done with your, with your construction. I'm not going to tell anyone when that should go in because I'm not a contractor that does that kind of work. And it does seem like it might be better to put that in if access is going to be limited. But now we've got contractors that use contract pump, or I mean, concrete pumps that can take the cement down the, you know, over a building and down in the back and pour your footing and put that up. And, you know, we've got all kinds of equipment can, that can lift those panels into place. And so to say, you know, that we've got to do that for one property owner's, uh, idea of how the project should go, then we're taking a side between you and the other property owner. owner. And I don't think that that is our, our place to do that. If it was impacting some other, other thing, then I could see some of that, but all I can see is that in the end, it's going to improve your property. Because I've driven back there and seen what's back there, you know? It's not a pretty site now, you're being able to use a little bit of it, great, I like that. And if you decide to do something with that at, at another time and to come in from the east, that would be great. You have every opportunity and every right to ask for that same infill overlay to do something like that. In this particular case, uh, you know, Mr. Smiley has, uh, has, uh, has gotten the property and he has made the request for a zone change, and that's what we're looking at tonight, is that, that zone change. And he's presented us with a, uh, he came to us prior, asked us what we wanted to see down there and he's complied with that stuff. Now, I don't know that it, that something, what you're describing, although I understand, I understand completely what you're saying. And you want to protect that back there. And that you want to protect your own property and make sure that things are going on in right. I just don't know if this is the proper way to do that, especially with property rights. I do have a little bit of experience with a few, uh, you know, description disputes and stuff like that. And it sounds like he's been willing to talk to you about it. And so I hope that you've got a good enough rapport with him now to bring him back to the table and say, okay, you're ready to go, let's get this done. And you, you put my, my fears at ease, but I, I don't know that, that this particular commission would be involved in that.
I also don't want to interfere if, uh, Mr. Smiley has a right, um, that I'm unaware of, I don't want to interfere. And, uh, Mr. Davis has his own property and Mr. Smiley has his own property. And if Mr. Smiley doesn't have a right, then his entrance onto your property would be trespassing and you can keep him off your property that way. So with that, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead. Does anybody have any other comments?
I'm just one of the things, just in the interest of trying to keep things simple and to address Mr. Davis' concern, I can't imagine that John wants to wait that long. Between now and the city council meeting, we definitely can work, try and just get some kind of friendly commitment.
There you go.
From John to have that wall installed before we issue a building permit or something like that. And for a lot of reasons, I'd be shocked if he didn't, you know, freely offer that in this case, so I will do that unless you tell me otherwise and we'll have some conversation with the council.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Dave.
And it's Mr. Smiley's.
Have this, we'll go before the city council, if you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, we just don't have enough time to, you know, we're on vacation, so. All right, I just wanted my, I need my interest protected.
Sure.
That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Ernest?
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the three hundred north duplex zone change contingent upon compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
We got a motion, like Commissioner Ernest? And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, concept review, Arrowhead subdivision.
We can jump to the part of town, Mike, I appreciate it. So I, I did email you a presentation, touched my fingers, it went through.
Just sign into all your emails.
Yes. But don't pull it up yet, if you can just pull up the aerial. And then we'll let Jared Morgan here with GWC Capital, correct? He's gonna talk through the presentation that he's prepared for you tonight. I just wanted to briefly introduce it and kind of give just a general, uh, the general sentiment of the DRC's comments this morning. This, this item has come before you before in a number of different forms. Previously to most of you being appointed to the planning commission, there was approval given for a subdivision back in two thousand seventeen. The approval for that preliminary plat expired. Um, and then the applicant has come in a couple of times, I think, to talk conceptually as far as, uh, slight redesign to the project, um, as well as some zoning. So the DRC did look at it tonight and we'll pull the slides up in just a second. Jared was kind enough to kind of show the progress over time as far as the original design and layout versus his, his current, uh, concept. He's looking for general feedback and direction from the planning commission. Ultimately, his next step would be to make final drawings and submit, well, he's already made application for preliminary plat, but updating his, his final drawings, uh, for the preliminary plat. Generally, the DRC looked at this area and if we throw the zoning layer on, with the two thousand seventeen approval, the R one twelve zone was applied to the property. Uh, down on Arrowhead, there is a.
Two thousand seventeen approval, is that what you said?
Two thousand seventeen. Down on the corner, Mike, can we get the zone?
R one twelve, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. We've got a, uh, commercial area that currently is proposed to expand. Um, and then there was a central, more centrally located park that was in the middle that's now being contemplated possibly to the west. And the DRC kind of looked at this and, and they feel that there's a lot of good qualities that would lend to this remaining R one twelve. Uh, they like the idea of providing some additional lot width so you can get three car garages or a place for toy haulers. There's multiple vantage points as far as view, uh, corridors and whatnot, just some great views whether it's east or west. And then for some of the reasons associated with, uh, increase on the C two and increase on the park size, um, they didn't necessarily have, have a favorable reaction to, um, rezoning portions of it to the R one nine.
Was our previous recommendations also R one twelve, the last one that came before this group?
Yes.
So we have reviewed it.
I believe it, I believe it was last year. I think it was last year.
Yeah.
How big is that C two corner?
Uh, we can, we can tell you in just a second.
And if you want to finish your presentation before I ask questions, Commissioner Ernest, you just wait.
No, I appreciate the comments. I appreciate it.
I'll just stop.
Uh, anybody ninety-five, so, but it will expand, you know, the proposed finished C two area?
It's about three acres.
All right, well, without further ado, let me turn the time over to Jared. We'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you have after Jared's presentation. I think Jared would appreciate if you interrupted him anytime during the presentation if you have questions.
Yeah, I actually have the site plan in the slide deck that shows it, so. I'm Jared Morgan, I'm with, uh, GWC Capital. Uh, we're a subsidiary of, uh, the Clyde Companies. And I pres- I'm representing both the Clyde Companies and Sunrock tonight as this is a Sunrock site. They're a sister company of ours. And so, um, as many of you are aware, this, this is an important site for Sunrock. As I, it's, it's been, it's a site, uh, sorry, can you go? Yeah, you stay on the aerial. It's a site that, when we acquired H E Davis, um, years ago, this, uh, this site was, um, a parcel that was a part of that acquisition. And so they've been operating here, um, for quite some time under a C U P, I believe. Um, it's been rezoned as R one twelve for a few years now. And, uh, this is, uh, this site is, um, has been great and, uh, they're ready to relocate though and they, as you're aware, they're relocating to our industrial park. It was one of our anchor, anchor tenants there, them and Sunpro, another subsidiary of ours. And so the timing of the site's been interesting because we've been needing to get the industrial park going and get their, their new headquarters completed before they can relocate off the site. So we've been, we've been working, um, pretty closely with them in regards to timing, um, through all of this. Um, can you go to the next slide? So in two thousand seventeen, as was mentioned, this was the, um, preliminary plat that was And that's, uh, that's what you saw when Brandon, uh, when Brandon pulled up earlier. So you had a smaller, uh, commercial piece here. This was a, a community park here and there were two hundred and four lots, um, within the development.
Average lot size, Jared?
So it's R one twelve, so it should be an average of twelve thousand square feet. Scott, am I misspeaking? This is Scott's design, so.
Sorry. What did you ask me?
Average lot size on the preliminary plat approved in two thousand seventeen?
Uh, I don't know, but it was the twelv- it was the averaging.
Yeah.
On the old master plan, which was two point six nine, but I don't know the average
I had to do a refresher myself last night and this morning as I was kind of, um, looking at, looking at the site and how it's kind of evolved over the years. The reason why I'm here tonight is because we are requesting a rezone. Um, and, and I'm needing some direction from your, from this forum. I received some constructive feedback and criticism today from DRC, which was, which I welcomed and I will welcome again, um, tonight. Because we, we want to, we really are trying to do the right thing here and we want to deliver a really quality, a really quality, um, development to your city. I mean, the, this, this is, uh, this is a fantastic site. This is, this is Del Monte here, um, that, uh, neighbors the Fritzy piece right here. And then on this side, these, these view lots over here are, are pretty spectacular. I mean, the highway's just down, um, just down the hill from here, so, um, it's a, it's an exciting site and we're glad that Sunrock is, uh, is ready to move off of it. And, and we've been on site reclaiming the pad to, to meet Scott's, uh, rough grading. Um, we've had geotech done, phase one done, phase two done. Um, we're working closely with Dave and Brandon and, and their team and Lance Hess on, on how the reclamation is, uh, should go and should finish out. Can you go back to the, can you go back to this, uh, upper slide? During, during the, um, investigation phase of, of each of those studies, you know, we, we have found, um, that throughout the site, um, you know, the geotech, wherever there's a lot, a home lot, um, the geotech called to go down to native and then we're compacting back up to, to grade. So that's, that's happening right now on, on the site. The phase one and phase two, the phase one was, was, uh, was site wide, phase two really focused mainly on where our existing, existing operations are, which makes sense, right? Cause we have fuel tanks there and we have, um, a shop and, you know, and so, um, there will be a more concentrated remediation effort here, but nothing else, nothing else on the site showed, um, any real environmental issues. But we're continuing to go through the investigative process as we reclaim and we're working with R E M C, a third party, and Lance Hess to, uh, on protocols to follow. So can you go down to, um, yeah, next slide after this? Um, there's been a couple changes in the, around us in the community over the last few years and, um, you know, this, this is, this is our property here, so Del Monte, Del Monte is here. And this R one nine and R three and R four, these areas that were recently approved, um, you know, we've, we've been working with this developer, um, on some electrical needs and, and how to, how to make Del Monte kind of more of a, you know, really more of a residential, residential road. I don't know if Paul Washburn, is Paul Washburn still involved in that?
A little.
A little, okay. Paul Washburn actually was the founder of GWC Capital five or six years ago and he's since retired, but great guy, so we've been working with him a little bit on this. And so, um, a part of our rezone request is, is, uh, R one nine, a portion of the site to be R, R one nine. Um, and, and a portion of it would be here adjacent to what you've approved recently, um, within the city. Can you go to the next slide? Mr. Michael? So this is where our concept, this concept is at today. Again, here's Del Monte right here. We've, here's, here's the main changes from what was approved in two thousand seventeen. Um, we've, we've expanded the commercial here to be more accommodating to, to a commercial user. The site that we just had wasn't conducive to, to good commercial use. So this is, this is much, a much better commercial pad and has a much better presence here on this lit intersection at Arrowhead and Del Monte. So that in and of itself would trigger a rezone with, with you. We've shifted the park, um, to be right here. Can you, can you go down just a little bit more so I can, um, thank you. Shifted the park here. This is plus or minus an eight, eight acres of, of park. The reason why we've shifted it here is that some of our reclamation items that, uh, in some of the area within the pit that we're a little less sure of still, um, is, is, is right here. Um, and what I, what I mean by that is undocumented fills. When we've done borings and things, um, you know, we're not seeing environmental issues, but it is undocumented fill and it gives us a little bit of pause. And so that's why, that's why we have shifted the park here. Um, we've met with your parks department about this being a, a park. The initial talks were more of a regional park, um, but since, uh, since we, this morning, Bart and Seth and, and the parks group, they, they had made indications that it's maybe a little too big of an area and they'd like to see it maybe a little bit smaller. So I'll continue to work with, uh, with the reclamation team on, on, you know, what, what we can do, what we can do here to make the park smaller. But that being said, if it's a city park, I'm unable to count it towards my density calculations, right? And so as we've been on the drawing board trying to make this deal pencil, um, we've, we've, uh, and we've, we've tried to salvage as many units as we could, so that's what, that's what's resulting in the overall approach to the site right now and that's what's resulting in this R one nine rezone request. Um, I'm so sorry, Michael. Can you show, can you just show me, um, these numbers up here? So currently, there's a hundred and twenty-seven lots that are in the R one nine zone, seventy-one lots in the R one twelve. And again, that's a, you know, this request is coming from us wanting to sell this to the city as a, as a city park. And excluding that area from my calculations, my density calcs. So that's, that is our honest thought processes, we've been going through this with your staff.
How big of a park are they thinking, if they want smaller, eight acres now rolling?
It's said between three to five acres.
Unless the price is right.
Unless the price was right.
Then I'd go for eight.
Yeah.
And I asked about.
And the code doesn't allow it to be counted towards density if it's granted to the park?
Well, my understanding is Jared mentioned it, but they've had discussions and up to this point, it's been the city would outright purchase it, so it would be separate from the development. Other options could be, it could be dedicated open space, um, and then the code would address that differently. But the, the main thing that we still have is, is, uh, one difference from two thousand seventeen, some of the newer commissioners might not, uh, have a history with it, but we did make the change to the averaging. And so if you have exceptionally large lots, you know, some of the complaints the city council and planning commission has heard over the years is it's resulted in relatively small lots. And so something from the two thousand seventeen changes, we carefully, uh, do the averaging and, and see how that's calculated.
One question about that park area is, what's the slope of the ground there? Doesn't that dive off of that hill a little? Is that the, the western edge there of the property?
Scott, do you recall?
It, it does on the very edge, right there above Gordon's property. It's pretty flat until you get to that, that, which, you know.
So there's not very much of it? Most of that is up on top where it's flat.
Yeah, it's really nice bluff up there.
Yeah, yeah.
And at the end, it does, that's what makes, gives it the great views, is it not tops steep.
Exactly.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible for part of that, if you get cable to the city park and then adjacent to it, the common area, that they would get credit for, but in a, in actual use, it would be a soccer field associated with the park?
Um, that would something, have to be something that would have to be negotiated. What, I don't know if Jared knew it before this morning, but one thing that the. What, I don't know if Jared knew it before this morning, but one thing that the city had changed, I think, since you guys met a month ago or so, was this, as Jared mentioned, the city's first initial blush look was, hey, this could be a regional facility. But then the more they researched it, looked at the design of the project, looked at the neighborhoods around it, they don't necessarily want to put attractions and amenities that would qualify it as a regional park. They'd rather have it be a functioning neighborhood park. And so it may not have ball fields or soccer fields, it may just be more of a playground and, and grass space and open space and things of that nature.
So not programmed?
Not programmed, great, thank you, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we're, we're open to looking at a couple different scenarios. But we are at a place where some direction from this, from this commission would be very much appreciated because we are ready to, we're ready to move to preliminary plat stage and run it concurrently with the rezone so we can get design going and, and we, we fully intend to deliver some great lots this year. Sunrock is moving forward, you know, with that, so.
Another question I have is, is that the parcels on the east that look down towards Main Street, those also look nearly, well, they look into the river bottoms, which gives an unobstructed view right to the mountain now.
Yeah, it's a phenomenal viewpoint from up here.
Yeah, are those lots along there larger or smaller than they were prior to this request? Seems like those are almost, either those are the ones on the west or your, or are your premier lots that would, that would probably drive the highest price.
Yeah, that's a, that's, I don't know, as in, in comparison to what was, are you, I asked him what was, what was previously approved of the preliminary plat in 2017?
Can I take a look?
It's about the same.
Yeah, about the same.
So it should be small, they should be smaller than now versus then, even if it's just a little bit. They look pretty smaller.
Yeah.
Tough to tell.
Yeah, it is. Would you mind going to the last two slides? I just, I mean, we do care greatly about the product that we want to put here. And so, we, you know, the buyer that we're, that we're working with has some nice product, this is their product. You know, we feel like the thirty-nine footer product, two door, the two car garage product fits nicely onto, within the R19 zone. And if you go down to the next, to the next slide, you know, the real difference here with, with a lot of the lots within the R112 is that we, we would be able to fit a third, you know, a third car garage. Earlier this morning, you know, this morning, you know, Chris and Seth and a number of others made comments about how they, they would like to see some larger lots because of, you know, people just don't have a lot of places to park. You know, toys or RVs or trailers or whatever, right? So we totally understand that. I just wanted to get, I just wanted to let, I, I have gotten comfortable with these two zones because of the product type that I feel like we could do it. I don't know if this is, if you like hate what you're seeing right now, but I just wanted to show you that, that, the difference in product type to me wasn't, wasn't significant enough to give me some, some pause. But that's just me, so.
A third car garage is significant to a lot of home buyers. So, and I feel like that's, that's a product that is not in high, I mean, not in a high enough supply right now in Spanish Fork. At least, I mean, with, with.
Yeah. So, that being said, I'm, would love some feedback because we're, whatever feedback you give me tonight, we're gonna take back to our internal teams and we're going to move forward with a rezone and site plan.
What's the difference in size of parks from the original to today? Cause obviously you've had to move it around and that's really where you're losing some of your houses, right? Cause.
And the commercial, the commercial space.
All the commercials being larger as well, because we're going to two hundred and four.
Lots because of that.
I believe it was just over three acres originally.
This, this one right here, Brandon?
And just to clarify, if the price is right, comment, we did have our environmental consultant up here today with the DRC and he has some concerns with the three acre park area. So his suggestion to the city was do your due diligence, request specific information for that part of the property because if there is cleanup that needs to take place, the mayor may not impact the price or the deposit one before it's, it's purchased. And so, that's kind of why the park is, is not settled yet as far as.
So I guess I'll, I can give my comments. I, I would not be likely to vote in favor of changing that section to an R19. I feel, I know as you've seen the other development come in, you've seen R19 zoning there, it's like, okay, well, let's see if we can extend that a little bit further. I agree with Commissioner Warnock's comments about that this is a product type we, we, we need more in the city of and I'd like to keep that zone the way it is. I think it's a, a great opportunity, I'm not, for, a great opportunity for you and the city, the, for it to be R112. I'm not opposed to the commercial area expanding, but that one does look small, I think that limited the uses you can have there. It would mean you'd lose some building lots, but I don't know how that would pencil for you as far as the land, but if it needs to grow a little bit, I would, I would not have hesitation on that. That's my thoughts.
Would you mind going back to this second line?
Um, with, yeah, the new one, thank you.
I guess my question is, is, is that, is just the size of the park? Obviously, the size of the commercial lot there is also something that's driving that, but is, is it just the additional acreage that will be lost to the applicant? If, if the park moves there and it stays that size, that takes a few more acres, about three acres out of buildable space in the development. Is that what's driving this then? You're trying to recover those lots that would be there if you stayed with the three acres rather than the eight acre, was it three?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're trying to recover that with your R9 alone?
I would be with Commissioner Mitchell in the fact that I, I actually like the commercial growing a little bit, especially what's going adjacent with that thoroughfare, like it, it makes sense for there to be something a little bit more, bigger, for lack of better words. And, but I do agree again with Commissioner Warnock in the fact that we need this type of housing. Sunrock and Clyde Company is bringing a lot of jobs into Spanish Fork and there's going to be lots of people looking for housing there. And especially maybe the R12 housing is, is limited in Spanish Fork at this time. And so I would be against changing out the R9.
Some of my, some of my feedback, I'm a little, I'm a little bit conflicted, so the company I work with is developing the Fritzy property. And so I see the R19 and I'm empathetic to that, I also see C2. And typically I think, well, it's not a bad idea to have R19 surrounding the C2. But at the same time, we do need more R112 in the city. So I'm probably more conflicted because I could see, but I also see Del Monte Road as a decent delineation between that it's R4 then R3, it's an ever deep, ever less dense as you go up the hill and as, frankly, as the land, that elevation give, I think, the better lots at, at this elevation than even the Fritzy one, the Fritzy property. So I, I think it's an okay delineation as well. But I'm a little conflic, I'm probably more conflicted than, than some of the other commissioners, so that's kind of my feedback. But I, I think R12, again, it's higher elevation. I wouldn't be for R, R1, I wouldn't be for R19 on the whole thing necessarily at all, or even as much as you're showing. Sorry, my, my feedback isn't that clear.
Nope, no, no, it is.
Conflicted on it. It's truly, I'm a little conflicted. I would, yeah.
Anybody else have comments to share?
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
I'd like to know from staff what some of the concerns were as you met this morning. And were there some things that were brought up that we haven't talked about that we need to?
I think you guys have hit all of them on the head. A lot of the concerns were identical, I'd say, Vaughn.
As present this morning as well as Dave. Probably the only one that wasn't really touched on was, started to be touched on by Commissioner Joseph Ernst was if it is using a mirroring technique, then the size of the R19 and the Fritzy is a lot smaller than the proposed R19 here. And so if you were trying to concentrate around the commercial, then it probably shouldn't branch out as far as this. But I think the main consensus of the group, kind of the general sentiment was this is a great place for R112 lots and let's leave it that way.
I, I asked that question for exactly that reason is that when this was zoned R1, R12, that, that seemed to be a great fit for that because of the topography and you got view lots on both sides and stuff like that. And so, I would like to see it stay R12.
Is there any appetite from the commission to maybe consider less R9? Not completely in eliminating the possibility of R9, but less R9?
I'm, I'm not interested in that, I mean, Joseph is conflicted, he probably isn't.
I can hear your thought.
You're conflicted, so you might be interested in that.
Well, that's, that's, that's all I could potentially get behind is, is a lot, is less R19. But it'd be kind of, probably a lot less.
I think the applicant can get the fill for where we're coming from. I mean, you can take that for, and apply it how you want. The more you're along the lines of the thoughts that both the DRC and we've given you, I think the smoother your path ahead is. But I mean, take that and do what you want with it.
I guess I have one more thing is, it, it's just reiterating what I would say. I would, I, I don't have an appetite for even less R19 because there is a, there's a big population of, in the market that would love to come and stay in Spanish Fork. And for some reason, that third car garage and that little more space really speaks to people. And we already have a lot of R9 product in the city, so that's.
Okay, anything else you want opinions on?
No, I think we know, we know where we're gonna be next, so.
I think we all agree we're excited to see it develop though.
Totally.
It's gonna be awesome.
For sure.
Yeah, this has been a long time coming and so, it's a great project and in a great location. Maybe you could reclaim some of your lost area by cutting the size of the park.
Sure, yeah, it's definitely.
There's just gonna be a trade-off in the cost of remediating that, it might be more expensive to do that.
You know, that's not really, anyway.
Thank you so much.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
I think at this point, we were ready to adjourn, is that correct? And then go to work session?
I knew that we adjourned.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.